All right, so we convene to the regular meeting of the Board of Education. Call to order of the regular meeting of the Board of Education. Roll call, Mr. Lou, Mrs. Brand, Mrs. Dow, Mrs. Zahn, Dr. Title. I'm here, John Matola, Mrs. Iaccone, Mrs. Albin will be here probably right around eight. Mr. Carey and Mr. Fadabean are all here. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
All right, so the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Why don't we break these out? The first one is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 10th, 2011. I have Mrs. Zahn, seconded by Mrs. Iaccone, and we were going to look at that. Mrs. Zahn, did you as Secretary take a look at that?
Yes, thank you. For those of you who don't know how this works, I take my minutes and Mrs. Dyer takes her minutes. We have it taped and recorded, and we compare these minutes before they come into your packet. So when there was a discrepancy, Ms. Dyer went back to the audio and the video, and she sent me an email which says, "I listened to the audio and watched the video of May 10th minutes that Mr. Lou wanted changed." Both the audio and video have it the way we put it. The video actually shows his hand up voting in favor and Mr. Matola calling it out, voting in favor. Mr. Lou, Mrs. Zahn, Mr. Matola, Mrs. Iaccone, Mrs. Albin, Mr. Fadabean, Mrs. Brand voting in opposition, and Mr. Carey abstaining. 611, Sue Dow was not at the meeting. So based on this, I would vote that we accept the minutes as stated in the record.
Mr. Lou.
Well, then, may I make a note that saying that I was confused because that's not the way I wanted to be voting? Can I make it tonight?
You can say it on the record tonight if you want to, but that's, can't vote back. Okay. So with that, are we ready to vote on the May 10th, 2011 minutes? Okay. All in favor? Opposed?
(inaudible).
Okay, so Mrs. Dow abstained, Mr. Lou's opposed. Mrs. Brand, you're in favor, correct? Okay, the rest are in favor. Thank you. All right, the next motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the June 14th, 2011. Mrs. Zahn, seconded by Mrs. Iaccone. Any discussion on these minutes? Okay, seeing none, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Unanimous. Mr. Fadabean, did you vote?
Yes, I voted.
Okay, I didn't see you.
No, not unanimous. I have, the unanimous, I have to abstain, I was out there.
Okay. Everyone in favor? Mrs. Brand abstains?
Oh, no, I voted for.
You voted for, yeah, I saw you, okay. Thank you.
I heard (inaudible).
Okay, so now we are at item number eight, Student Committee Liaison Reports. Mrs. Albin's not here. Mrs. Brand, do you have anything tonight?
There were two things I wanted to just ask if we could just take a moment because we did have a lot of retirees this season, and also because Mr. Boyle has also left us as our Deputy Superintendent, and just wanted to say we wish them all the very best and we thank them for all the time that they've served. So it just was a moment because most of those folks have been around for quite a long time.
That's right. Yes, I think we all feel the same way. I think we're going to see Mr. Boyle one or two more times?
Uh, no.
No? Okay, all right.
No.
Okay.
I mean, I see him, but not in his capacity.
Not here, all right.
The only other thing I have to add would be, I believe all of the board members got the notification from Sess, I know Dr. Title had it, that there will not be a summer program. It does affect our district the same way it does so many others, but it is speaking to the lack of, or the uncertainty of funding.
These are the state inter-district programs which are now in jeopardy because of the uncertain budget situation.
Right. In terms of Board of Health, I know, I just want to mention that Mrs. Joanne Ryan is out in the audience and will be helping us later on with some clarification if it's needed to. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dow, anything tonight?
Um, yes, Finance did not meet, so no report there. CAE, nothing. I have nothing as a liaison that the rest of you didn't receive in emails, and SEPTA now has stopped meeting now for the summer, so no report.
Thank you. Mr. Fadabean, any reports?
Very briefly, we had a transportation issue arise, but to my knowledge it's not been brought forth to the, or maybe not have been appealed, to the Transportation Safety Advisors. So there are no actions been taken because the status is not quite known yet.
Thank you. Mrs. Iaccone.
Uh, let's see. Special Project Standing Building Committee, currently there is a town planning and zoning meeting going on right now, so hopefully Sherman will receive all of its appropriate approvals so that we can continue to move forward with that. The RTM met last night, and they postponed the vote on the Tomlinson facade work due to the cost overages at the, the projected cost overages at the train station. RTM members felt that they first need to get a handle on what the financial impact of that is going to be on the town. So they postponed it to the July meeting. And I don't have anything for Board of Finance except that they're going to hold a special meeting tomorrow night relevant to the parking, not the parking, the train station, and the $12,000 cost to taxpayers. That's all.
Okay, Mr. Carey.
No report.
Mr. Lou, any report tonight?
No report.
Okay, I don't have any report. Mrs. Zahn.
No report.
All right, moving along, yes, yes.
I'm sorry, Ed, through the chair to Mr. Lou, do you know anything about the status of the sale of the oil tank at Fairfield Woods?
No.
Thank you.
All right, Superintendent's Report.
I just, actually, Mrs. Dow jogged my memory. The CAE conference that is in November, the CAE CAPS Conference, I was accepted to do a presentation at that on operational audits. Of which we are now experts in Fairfield. And before it sweeps the rest of the state, it's a, I think it's called "look before you leap." We have received a number of calls about the operational audit, you know, what's involved in it, how much did it cost, did you really save anything, and so on and so forth. And so I said, "Well, if a few other districts are thinking about it, we'll put it in." So the, I actually got a good session Friday morning, right, I think it's right after the opening session. So that will be, and that's a very well-attended CAE. Of the every other year, that's the most attendees because that's after the elections, when a lot of people come. So you can skip that one because you're all experts in it, but we are now known across the state as the district that had the operational audit. We're not the only one, but, so point that out. There is a possibility that on July 26th, the Board of Finance may be discussing purchasing, that was in the audit actually, the whole purchasing, way purchasing is done, Tom's got that tentatively on the agenda, we're trying to work that out, so just if you're in town and you check out the Board of Finance agenda and want to see what that's all about, that's a possibility. That's their quarterly review night, that's not their regular night. But purchasing was in their audit, it was in our audit, and so we've been trying to hash that out. And you'll hear a lot more from me later, so I'll stop.
Okay. Item 10, Old Business, Approval of Curriculum. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the high school science curriculum, environmental earth science 1112, and biology 21 and 22. Could have a motion. Mrs. Iaccone, seconded by Mrs. Dow. Any discussion on this? Had a presentation the last time. All right, we ready to vote?
A question.
Yes, Mrs. Brand.
The curriculum actually, and what is done is fine. I just know that the way this has been done in the past, they were collapsing, and we had a larger Group Two, Level Two, and there are struggles when you're doing this kind of instruction, when it's very sequential, and that I would appreciate if possible so we could have an update as how that's working, because we're still trying to work out the kinks with differentiation. Science poses quite a challenge while you're doing that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, any public comment on this motion, this motion only? Seeing the sparse crowd out there, not any public comment, are we ready to vote on this? Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous, all right. B, Approval of Policy. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve policy 5511 immunizations as presented at the June 14th, 2011 Board of Education meeting. That's enclosure number three. Any discussion on this? Mrs. Iac, oh, I'm sorry, I need a motion. A motion, Mrs. Iaccone, seconded by Mrs. Brand. All right, any discussion by board members on this? Go ahead, Mr. Fadabean, you have something?
A quick question, and that is, we're adding some immunizations to the list here in our policy. My question is, are all those mandated by state stature, or are they elective by state stature?
Oh, Joanne Ryan is here, and why don't you come up to the mic, one of the microphones anyways, Joanne?
Right over there.
Or wherever. We also put in your packet the draft of the Administrator Regulations, which I think helps clarify it, but, Joanne, can you speak to this?
Yes.
It might be a little button there.
See the button there?
Yeah.
Is that on?
Yes, go ahead.
It, to answer your question, they are state, it's state law. It's not anything that we have any ability to have an option on. There's always with any, with all of these immunizations, parents have, there's always a right for a parent to have a medical exemption if a child had certain reactions to components of vaccine, or to declare a religious exemption if in fact they have one. They have that right. And in addition, if a child has had the disease and can prove by virtue of a blood titler that they don't need the immunization, then that's another option.
And Joanne, explain the regulations. The question came up the last time about influenza was listed, but it didn't say what ages, and sometimes that moves around, so we included the draft regulations. Can you just speak to that?
Uh, yes, that's new this year, the influenza, which is only being recommended for entry into preschool, and it needs to be given between August and December 31st, the first dose. The reason, you know, that the immunization program gives for that happening is because of the increase in hospitalizations in that age group for complications from influenza. And as of now, that is the only group where it's recommended, but, you know, CDC recommends influenza vaccine for all groups.
Mr. Fadabean, have a question.
This administrative regulation says vaccines should be administered annually between August 1st and December 31st.
Here's the mic.
Your mic.
It says that vaccines should be administered annually between August 1st and December 31st. By, my understanding that, and I may be wrong, influenza is sort of the flu that varies year to year, and you get immunized, people generally, certain age groups can get immunized every year. So my reading of this would be that every student has to be immunized on an annual basis, not just before going to preschool. Is that not the way it reads, or is that the way it reads?
My understanding is that it is only for entry into preschool.
And after preschool, there's no longer requirement to be immunized for influenza?
Right.
No, they're not right now, and I will clarify that, I have the regulation right here.
Yeah, it says one dose for students under five years of age enrolled in preschool on or after August 1st, 2011, right?
If I may, I think that's a recommendation that the CDC has said, pretty much for the community at large, but this was actually isolating a higher-risk group, and thus the change.
Right, so it's not one that is going to be grandfathered in, so.
Well, no, but I want to clarify what's going to happen. What's going to happen, as I understand you telling me, is that people who enter kindergarten are going to be immunized from influenza once, or twice if it's required, if it's a first dose, and that's it for the rest of the school, the rest of the time they go to school in Fairfield Public Schools.
Yeah, that is it for right now.
There's no annual requirement that every year.
There's no annual requirement according to the regulation right now.
But, but it says vaccines should be administered annually between August 1st and December 31st, implying for all age groups. That's what I don't understand. That's not, that's not the intent.
No, it is not the intent.
Right, they're going to be, they're going to be immunized when they enroll, and then annually, they're going to be, it can be interpreted, then annually between these dates, they're going to be immunized as well. That's what the word annually says.
Those are regs for you.
Well, that's what I don't understand.
Yeah, I didn't think annually meant the same group of people. I think it meant year after year, this same requirement will be in place for the people are incoming.
Well, that's influenza, isn't influenza, the, this influenza they're talking about in this administrative reg is the same influenza that people get every year because the virus changes and the benefit of the immunization is on an annual basis.
Right, I'm sorry if, you know, maybe we can clarify that language a little bit, but the regulation speaks specifically to individuals enrolled in preschool on or after August 1st of 2011, you know, and that's the group, and they are not more than 59 months of age, they're under five years old. So, and it does say, and annually has received, that's the actual language in the regulation, but they're speaking about that specific group.
So in practice, the intent is that kindergartners get immunized.
Every year, the preschoolers will be.
When they go to first grade, second grade, third grade, and fourth grade, they don't have to get immunized?
No, no.
Not required.
It's not required.
Right, it's preschool.
Preschool. Preschool, see Paul?
All right, preschool.
All right.
Mr. Carey, that's.
Why you don't vote on regulations?
Right, that's why we don't vote on regulations.
But they should be clear. I know, this is, this is a draft.
So.
I mean, we need to clarify that. That language is taken right out of the regulation, but, you know, if it's not clear, I have no objection to clarifying it.
I've, I've had some more time to do research on this since our last meeting where I didn't read package inserts to our, my fellow board members, which was too late. I'd like to encourage my fellow board members not to support this. I understand it's a state policy. After talking to one of our legislators, and a policy committee, not the entire legislature looks at this and decides for, for our state. And my objection to this is simple. I think that measles and tetanus and ephtheria is, is one set of immunizations, I understand their rationalization before that. We're asking this board, the state is asking this board, to tell parents of three and four-year-olds who want to attend preschool, and I'm glad it's just at that level at this point, that we're going to make a decision for them. They're not going to make that decision with their doctor. And here's the downside of that, and, Ms. Ryan, please correct me if, if I misspeak here, but if you look at this year's flu shots, anywhere from between two and eight percent of the kids get symptoms of the flu when they take the shots. Also, there's a new exciting popular one where it's, instead of being an injection, it's an inhalant, which is apparently very bad for children with asthma, or children potentially of asthma. The bigger challenge here is that the contraindications that you can opt out for are typically for people with avian or egg allergies, which is about three to five percent of the population, okay? And much like you, we spend a great deal of time with peanut allergies, anaphylactic shock is a potential result of this, and if the parent does not know that their child has this potential problem at age three, we're inviting a very bad situation. So again, I don't know why we're making this decision for parents in our community, and we're not letting the parents and their doctors make that decision on something as, you know, on the flu. Like I said, I understand measles, I understand chickenpox, I understand ephtheria, I understand a lot of these other vaccines and why we have to do it, but I won't be supporting this. And I'm disturbed that a small group of people in our legislature have made this decision for the entire state of Connecticut.
Can I just speak to that a minute?
Sure.
You know, it is, and I did actually speak to the, our contact at the State Immunization Program today. You know, this, this is a law, it's not just a policy, you know, they're telling us that we have to do it unless you fall into one of these criteria where you get a medical exemption or a religious exemption. And, you know, I mean, they, the immunization program develops their regulations based on the recommendations of the Advisory Committee of Immunization Practices, American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Association of Family Practitioners, and it goes through a pretty rigorous process. Then they send it to the Attorney General's Office, and it goes to the Public Health Committee, where I think they do have a time where the public can voice concern. But my understanding is that this is not an option, it's a law.
Again, if I can just respond to that. I understand what you're saying, and I understand that contesting this back to the state would be a spurious waste of our time, however, you know, three to five percent of the population has avian allergies. Every one of these vaccines has a contraindication because they're created, they're egg-based products, and I don't see the value of mandating that when, you know, we have parents and doctors that can be making those decisions for our children, so I sense I'll be in the minority, but that is my concern.
Mrs. Iaccone, you have something?
Yeah, I, I apologize, I don't know your last name.
Oh, Ryan.
Through the chair to Mrs. Ryan. Do you know when it, when this became a law?
It's going to be effective August of 2011. It was.
Okay, so it's a new law that's coming into play.
It's, this is a brand-new regulation, yes.
And does this apply only to public schools, or it'll apply to private preschools as well?
It applies to everybody.
So anybody who's going to preschool going forward will have to now have, in addition to all the other immunizations, will have to have a flu shot essentially?
Right, unless they have a medical contraindication or a religious exemption.
Okay. What do they do for people that have egg allergies and such, do you know?
They don't get a flu shot.
So that would be a medical exemption?
That's a contraindication, absolutely.
What if you had a, had a concern that your child could have an egg allergy, you've never given them eggs, you've never had any of that, would you qualify for a medical?
Well, you know, the state, when, when we have a medical exemption, a physician needs to, to make a statement that a child has a contraindication based on the components of the vaccine or a previous reaction. Now, if, if a family had many family members allergic to eggs and the physician felt it was a very high risk, he might write such a letter and the state would consider it. It's not a decision, you know, that, that we would make, but they can get waivers from the state, you know, that type of thing.
And what are the ramifications of children who do get this type of influenza? I'm assuming this is the regular flu of the year, this isn't?
Yes, it's the regular flu. I mean, it depends on what the strain is. As you know, we had a more virulent strain several years ago, or the, the possibility of that becoming a more virulent strain. And, you know, I mean, the statistic that I have is that, you know, an average of 20,000 children under five are hospitalized each year because of flu complications. They just are at higher risk if they get the flu.
Right, I'm sorry, could you repeat that number? What was that? Twenty?
This is from the state. In the United States, an average of 20,000 children younger than five years old are hospitalized because of flu complications.
Okay.
You know, this is, you know, the CDC has done a lot to promote flu vaccine across the board, so I think when the immunization program makes recommendations, they're not taking it lightly, and I think that, you know, in your behalf, you know, as a parent, I, you know, sometimes as a clinician, having a child before you and you're giving them, you know, five and six vaccines at a time, it's, you know, you, you think twice about it. But then when you see children who become ill or die from things that were preventable, that's the other side of the coin, and that's, I think, what they're looking at here.
I just have one last question. I think we all understand the ramifications if you decide to skip the MMR vaccination, and if everyone decides to stop doing that, there is a possibility that measles starts to spread and comes back.
Mm-hmm, which is happening.
Yeah, because people are deciding that they don't want the shot, or the vaccine, rather. What, what, is that, is that, that's not really a likelihood though for the, for the flu, right? Because the strain changes every year?
Um, the strain changes every year, that's correct. So, you know, I mean, I think generally people think that flu is something that people get over very easily, but it's not always the case.
No, I know, I've had the flu. My five-year-old actually had the flu last year because it was the first year we didn't get the flu shot, and every year we hadn't gotten it.
So, I mean, I can't really tell you the exact reasoning that, you know, but, you know, I can tell you for sure that the different agencies that look at this, or as I enumerated before, and, you know, this is all, goes through a pretty rigorous process before they make these recommendations.
Right, and we, and this is, and we do know that this is a law? This is going to be a law? Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, I think I saw Mrs. Brand, then Mr. Lou. You want to go first? Mr. Lou, then Mrs. Brand, go ahead.
Through the chair to, to Mr. Carey, and I guess also I wanted to ask you a question, Mrs. Ryan. You were talking about the numbers, about kids getting the immunization when they already have the flu? And your, the point, did you, did you make some, that some kids have already?
No, well, actually what I have, Mr. Lou, I'd be happy to share with you, is I grabbed a handful of what are called package inserts, which is what comes with each one of these drugs. I have a little familiarity of this through my profession. So what happens is every drug that a doctor has comes with a list of how to administer it and what the risks are. And contraindications are on, adverse events, they show the results of clinical trials. So if you go through, you know, fluvarin from, I apologize, I don't, one of those Glass Close Smith-Klein, one of them's, you know, all the major ones, Novartis. And what basically, if you go through what happens when they go to the clinical trials, roughly about two percent of the patients get flu symptoms. At average, between two and eight percent on these package inserts. And then, the thing that is a greater concern to me is that, again, and it's a small percentage of the population, but roughly three to five percent of our population has egg allergies, avian allergies. And what I would liken it to, and it might not be a great comparator, but we have children that have very serious reactions to peanut butter. It's similar. Injecting some with an egg-based product, if that's their first experience with the allergen, could create a situation that is very serious. Now, obviously, it's something that always done in a doctor's office, not the pharmacy, that type of thing, where they can react to it. It just seems to me that something like this is something that I would rather have a parent discuss with a doctor and have them understand and decide, instead of having this body decide for the parents.
Thank you. So following up on that, Mrs. Ryan, isn't, but aren't you, when you get the flu shots, aren't you supposed to get a little bit of a flu?
Yeah, well, you don't. I mean, people express it in that way, but the flu vaccine is not a live virus, so what you're getting is kind of an immune response to the vaccine. And it's true, you could get a little bit of a low fever and not feel good for a day, that's absolutely true, but it's not the flu.
Okay.
It's not the actual flu.
And my other question, Mr. Carey, was, I'm glad you did some research on this, but who, who was the legislator that you spoke to?
I spoke to Mr. Wong.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was trying to take notes as fast as I could, and I think Mrs. Ryan has answered a number of them. You don't get the flu when you get the shot, that does not happen. If you get the flu at all, you will get it in a milder form than you would had, if you had not taken, gotten the inoculation. People who have asthma, children included, are absolutely at higher risk. Certain people with pre-existing medical conditions are highly recommended to have it, which I think leads us to why this particular age group is being mandated to have it, because they in particular are high-risk. We're not making the decision here, actually. This is actually a mandate, it's a law, and when we are sworn in as board members, one of our jobs is we're supposed to adhere to the law. My point is, this is not an option. If parents have any reservations, by all means, they can discuss it with their physician and go through that and discuss what their individual child's health risks are, and then deal with it appropriately, but this board and this table, as quite frankly, agents of the state, we are obligated to respect the law and follow it.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything on this? Thank you, Mrs. Ryan.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so are we ready to vote? I'm going to go to the public, yep. Any public comment on this motion, this motion only? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Mr. Perry, Mrs. Brand, Ms. Dow, Ms. Zahn, Mr. Matola, Ms. Iaccone, Mr. Fadabean, opposed. Mr. Carey opposed. Okay, passes, thank you. All right, we are at item number. We are on item number 11, new business. Authorize, item A, authorize the chairman to send a letter to the first selectman requesting a building committee for the Riverfield Elementary School project. Recommended motion that the Board of Education authorize the chairman to send a letter to the first selectman requesting a building committee for the Riverfield Elementary School project. Can I have a motion? Mrs. Iacono, seconded by Mr. Carey. Any discussion on this? Mrs. Brand?
Just, we all know that this has been on the docket and something we want to go through. This is just to review the potential of a school project, not the scope of one. The reason I'm saying this is that I don't know what the impact is. Mrs. Iacono mentioned with how the town is going to have to deal with the train station and how it's going to absorb the cough and the debt, whether that's also going to affect this body and our capital projects that we have on our list for our long-range plan. Doesn't preclude us asking this, but I just think, moving forward, I want, I wanted us all to be aware that this also could have implications here as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Iacono?
I completely hear you and understand that, and said, you know, something about that last night at the RTM meeting in regards to the Tomlinson facade project, but I would like to say this on the record. I certainly hope that we are not about to be losing school projects because somebody didn't report a big loss at the train station. I think that's a really bad place for this town to be going. You know, I just want to get that on the record.
Mr. Lou?
And I would agree with what Mrs. Iacono said, but I would maybe take it a step further and say, when we get through all the stuff to figure out who did that and why it got done and why we didn't know and whose fault it is, at the end of the day, we're still probably going to have a deficit. And in some way, as we are not an island, we are part of this town, we are going to have to start to realize that we are going to have some big mountains in front of us to sort of make some decisions about this. Because as much as I want to go forward too with a lot of these projects to make our schools better, we have to be responsible and work with the town in trying to figure out a way out of a messy situation.
Thank you. Anybody else on this?
This is a difficult issue because certainly it is a need that the school district has. But as a board, I think we should be cautious as to what our requests are, considering the fiscal situation of the town. We have many needs in the school district, probably more needs that can be adequately funded in this economy and with the issues facing the town fiscally. Those issues facing the town fiscally, we heard of one at the last RTM meeting. My personal view is I don't think that's going to be the last. We know we have pension issues, we have a lot of budgetary issues that are going to be problematic as time unfolds unless the economy changes dramatically, which is very speculative and who knows what's going to happen. But for now, I'm inclined to move forward at least the request, and my understanding is it may not involve a particular scope of the project, but I think we have to be mindful of the scope of the requests we bring forth in the future so that when we really need something, we're not perceived as actually being somewhat responsible in bringing forth projects and not just asking for everything we need all at once or expected to be delivered all at once. That's, it's a difficult issue.
Thank you. Mrs. Zahn and Mrs. Iacono?
Thank you. This board determined that this is the, this is a need of this school system. And having said that, I understand what happened on the town's side. Again, the Board of Education needs to do and see what's right for the system as a whole. This has been put on the back burner, this project, for a while, and if we're going to do it, we do it right, or we don't do it at all.
Mrs. Iacono?
Hi, thank you. I wholeheartedly agree. We are in an island. We've admitted that, we've said that, we're all one town. But rather than getting into a partisan debate on this, I just, we set our goals. We adopted a plan, this is in our plan, we're certainly cognizant of it. It is a need that we absolutely need, or we wouldn't be moving it forward. And we took a lot of stuff off of our facilities plan, knowing that we're in a tough economic climate. My statement before was simply that I certainly hope that we're not going to be losing out on projects because somebody didn't report something that should have been reported. So I will be supporting this. I certainly understand if the Board of Selectmen hears this and decides that we can't afford to move forward with that, I respect it. But I agree with Mrs. Zahn, it is our job as a Board of Education to ask for what we need. The town can tell us whether or not we can afford it, and I think we did an excellent job vetting out those projects and whittling them down to where we need to be. So, thank you.
Mrs. Brand?
This does need to move forward, but I perhaps would then ask the chair to then contact the Board of Finance to have a better sense when they know what our total bond, available funds will be for, because we've got a rough estimate already from the Board of Finance of what we can do, and that will help dictate whether or not we need to revisit our long-range plan or not based on what the funding available is going to be.
Sure. Yeah, and I'm going to be supporting this. We have a facilities plan that we spent a ton of time on putting together. I think most elected officials in this town want to move forward on this project. Both sides of the political aisle were asking us, when are you going to start Riverfield? And sure, things could change, I understand, I think we all understand that. So I think we should move forward on this and let's just see what happens. So, any other further discussion on this? Any public discussion on this? Seeing none, we ready to vote? All in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you. Okay, we are on item number 12, public comments and petitions. During this period, the board will hear comments and receive petitions from any citizen present at the meeting. Any single presentation must be limited to two minutes, and audiovisual equipment cannot be used without the advance authorization of the chairman. The board will not hear comment on individual personnel matters or comments addressed to a specific member of the board. Decorum will be enforced. Citizens are asked to comment on any voting item at the time the item is under consideration by the board. Have any public comments tonight from anyone? Come on up. Hello?
Hi, Anne Pascoe, FVA. I would just like to echo something that was said previously about the teacher retirements. I believe that the figure now stands at 20 retirees. I haven't got a clue what that means in terms of years of service, but I know it's probably 400 maybe. Some of them had 37, 38, 44 years. So I think in wishing them well, I'd also like to be on record as thanking them for their dedication to educating the children of Fairfield. On a second related item, having listened to the fiscal crunch that is never-ending, I would like the board to consider having a designee have discussions with the association about possibly coming up with an early retirement incentive that is not a high-cost monetary incentive. The association does have some ideas, and what we would like to do is to work with you to maybe have that figure be 30 or 40 next year, which would certainly help out in balancing the budget. So on one note, thanks to the people who left, and on another note, I'm trying to help the others go. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're always open to good ideas. Anybody else in the public? Okay, seeing none. We are on item number 13, open board comment. Does any board member have anything? Okay, seeing none. We are on item number 14, convene to executive session. Recommended motion that the Board of Education convene to executive session to discuss superintendent's evaluation. Mrs. Iacono, seconded by Mrs. Zahn. All in favor? Unanimous? You all have to leave. Motion to reconvene in a public session. Mr. Carey, seconded by Mrs. Iacono. All right. We need to add a motion to the agenda, because it's not on here.
I need two-thirds.
I need a two-thirds vote. I should state the motion first, and then we'll vote to add it, correct? And Mrs. Zahn, can you read the motion to add to the agenda? Do you have it there?
Sure. Recommended motion to pay performance bonuses outlined in paragraph 2B of the superintendent's contract dated 5/25/2010 in the amount of $10,000.
Okay, so the motion is to add that to the agenda. Any discussion?
Do we move it?
I got to move it, yes. I'm sorry, Mrs. Iacono, seconded by Mrs. Albin. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of adding that to the agenda? Okay, it's added. Oh, all opposed? You're opposing the adding that to the agenda?
Oh, I beg your pardon.
That's what it is.
Sorry, yeah, I'm sort of, yeah.
So we're all, yeah.
Yes, we're fine.
All right.
All in favor.
All right, now, the main motion, read it, please. Mrs. Zahn, for the record.
Recommended motion to pay performance bonuses outlined in paragraph 2B of the superintendent's contract dated May 25, 2010 in the amount of $10,000.
Okay. All in, any discussion on this?
We need, well, we need a motion.
I'm sorry, motion. Mrs. Albin, seconded by Mr. Carey. Any discussion on this? Yes.
I would just like to say that I believe that Dr. Tidal has more than earned this bonus, and he has taken this district by storm this year. I believe that he really came here and has demonstrated true leadership for the district, worked very hard in achieving the goals, and I would like to say a personal thank you for all of his efforts.
Yes, Mrs. Brand?
I wanted to also add that, you know, upon reviewing this, that there was, quite frankly, a lot of work that I did personally and agonized over before I even came to this table. So I don't take the decision lightly, and I am attempting to be as fair as possible, but I do have still some things that I feel that were outstanding. But I, as I said, I don't take this decision lightly, and it didn't come easy.
Okay, anybody else? Public comment on the motion? Seeing none, we ready to vote? All in favor? Mr. Fattabey, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Albin, Mrs. Iacono, Mr. Matola, Ms. Zahn, Ms. Dow, opposed, Ms. Brand, and Mr. Lou. Okay. Now we have approval of superintendent's schools contract. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve an employment contract with the superintendent of schools from July 1, 2011, to June 30, 2014. Can you finish reading that, please, Mrs. Zahn? I know you wrote it down, I apologize.
Actually, that would be an amendment to the stated motion.
That's right. Okay, so let's move the recommended motion. That the Board of Education approve an employment contract with the superintendent of schools from July 1, 2011, to June 30, 2014. Mr. Carey, seconded by Mrs. Iacono. And do we have an amendment to that? Mrs. Zahn?
Yeah, who's making the amendment?
Move to, someone want to move to amend that? Mrs. Iacono? What's the language, Mrs. Iacono?
I'll read it for her.
We're just so tired.
That the Board of Education approve an employment contract with the superintendent of schools from July 1, 2011, to June 30, 2014, with a 0% salary increase and a performance bonus of up to $12,500 pursuant to 2B of the contract.
Need a second?
Need a second for that? Mr. Carey? Any discussion on the amendment? Amended motion? Yes, Mrs. Albin?
I won't be supporting this, and I would just like, both for the purposes of the public and directed through the chair to Dr. Tidal, that I will not be supporting the contract. Has no reflection on my value for your work here in this district. And I believe in my prior comments, I've expressed that, and I appreciate everything you have done, but I am not able to support the contract. I certainly look forward to having Dr. Tidal take care of this district in the future.
Mrs. Zahn?
Thank you. I'm going to agree with Mrs. Albin that, while of course I would approve the recommended motion, I can't support the amendment for the same reasons. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so we're voting on the amended motion? Any further discussion?
We're voting on the amendment.
On the amended amendment, right.
Is there an amendment to the amendment?
All in favor of the amendment? It's Mr. Fattabey, Mr. Carey, Ms. Iacono, Mr. Matola, Mrs. Dow, Ms. Brand, Mr. Lou, opposed, Mrs. Albin, and Mrs. Zahn. All right. Now, the amended motion, you want to read it one more time?
That the Board of Education approve an employment contract with the superintendent of schools from July 1, 2011, to June 30, 2014, with a 0% salary increase and a performance bonus of up to $12,500 pursuant to 2B of the contract.
Discussion on that? Ready to vote? Any public comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Mr. Fattabey, Mr. Carey, Ms. Iacono, Mr. Matola, Ms. Dow, Ms. Brand, Mr. Lou, opposed, Mrs. Albin, and Mrs. Zahn. Okay. All right, recommended motion that this regular meeting of the Board of Education adjourn.
Someone?
All in favor? Adjourn. Okay, thank you.